Next, we are on to Block sixty-eight Catalytic redevelopment project. And we have a presentation by Brady Shin.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is Brady Shin, Project Manager and the Property Development Team here at the Agency. Today, I will be walking you through the RFP responses and their proposals that we received as part of the Block sixty-eight Catalytic redevelopment project. I will also have Doug Woodruff and Ryan Armbruster available during work session question and answer period. Next slide, please. Very briefly, the RFP encompasses two agency-owned properties located at ten-ten West Jefferson and four-two-one North Tenth Street. This block is bounded by Tenth, State, Jefferson, and Eleventh Streets. The two properties together comprise just over one acre of land. Please note today that the agency-owned properties are visible in this slide in the yellow dotted outline. So though the block is outlined in red, the two properties at hand that the agency put together for its RFP are visible through that yellow dotted outline. Next slide, please. Please see the RFP's priorities shown below. These priorities were developed in collaboration with the Board of Commissioners and consequently are part of the RFP's evaluation criteria. Next slide, please. Block sixty-eight received three proposals. One from Eland and Company, the Chase Mixes, Elton Companies, and YMCA. The second by Green Street Real Estate Ventures. And the third by PEG or PEG Development. Eland and Company is located in Ketchum, Idaho, with its other three partners located in Boise, Idaho. Green Street Real Estate Ventures is located in Clayton, Missouri, located near Saint Louis, Missouri. And PEG Development is located in Provo, Utah. Two quick notes on all three proposals. They were responsive and each exceeds the RFP's minimum expectations as stated in the document in a variety of ways. Next slide, please. First, we have Eland and Company's proposal. This perspective is taken from Eleventh and Jefferson from the top of the Boise Plaza. Further details regarding which structure is part of the agency-owned parcels and which are part of the proposal's visionary outcomes component will follow in later slides. Again, this perspective is taken from Eleventh and Jefferson. Next slide, please. The proposed project is to develop a twenty-story mixed-use tower on the ten-ten West Jefferson property, AKA called Block sixty-eight South in this proposal, and a half-block mixed-use apartment building on Block sixty-nine. These buildings are highlighted in teal on this slide. These two structures contemplate one hundred and eighty million dollars of private investment. This proposal also assembles the agency-owned property and property owned by the YMCA to accomplish a larger visionary outcome redevelopment. Future development on Block sixty-eight North will take part of a YMCA facility. And then you see there's also proposed redevelopment projects on what is called Block seventy-eight and Block seventy-nine. Block seventy-nine is the current YMCA facility. In total, the project will deliver four hundred and fifty units between Block sixty-eight and Block sixty-nine. Block sixty-eight South will have two hundred and thirty market rate apartments. Block sixty-nine will have one hundred and thirty apartments at or below one hundred and twenty percent of Boise's area median income and twenty-five units at or below eighty percent of Boise's AMI. Sixty-five units will be market rate at Block sixty-nine. Next slide, please. This team's proposal includes a multi-phase visionary development of two and a half city blocks. It includes the following. Six hundred and twenty-six housing units, seven hundred and twenty-four parking stalls, over eighteen thousand square feet of retail space, ninety-eight thousand of YMCA facility space, twenty-six thousand of health and education programming space, fourteen thousand square feet of creative office space, and another fourteen thousand square feet of child development programming space. In total, this proposal contemplates two hundred and sixty million dollars of private investment in nine hundred and twenty thousand square feet of redevelopment.
Madam Chair, I've got a question about these. Um, the creative office space, Brady, is that internal to um, one of the uses already listed here, or is that external and available for for rent, purchase, et cetera? Like, is it tied to the Y or health ed or child development? Or is it just gonna be put out there for for bids or lease?
Based on the information in the proposal, it will be part of a private commercial office office space. So there will not be a contemplated YMCA use at this time.
Thank you.
Next slide, please. Regarding the mobility hub and parking structure, one hundred and fifty-eight park boy stalls are proposed as part of the Eland and Company response. Three hundred and fifty-six additional parking stalls will be included. And this project also contemplates sixty-one bike boy bicycle parking stalls in the mobility hub. Next slide, please. This perspective looks south towards the river along Eleventh Street. State Street is the immediate crossing intersection visible. Starting left and moving clockwise to help provide a little bit of a perspective on what is happening here. On the left, we have a residential and retail structure that is currently the YMCA's main facility. Next, the YMCA's proposed new facility spans the agency-owned former Idaho Sporting Goods building and a YMCA parking lot. Then behind that, you have the proposed residential tower with mobility hub and parking facility as well as active retail space. This is currently the ten-ten West Jefferson Building. Jumping across Eleventh Street to the right side now, you see the Boise Plaza peeking in at the very end and the residential retail building on Block sixty-nine, which sits at the former Nelson School Supply Site and now the YMCA's Healthy Living Healthy Living Programming Site. To our immediate right is that contemplated creative office space that is currently located in a parking lot used by the YMCA. Next slide, please. Here's some additional information on the development program. The project has multiple sustainability elements, including electric vehicle charging, an all-electric building, and the commitment to meet the Boise Climate Zone specifications. The project anticipates requesting twenty point five million dollars in agency financial participation with the breakdown shown before you. Project anticipates beginning construction in April twenty twenty-three and be complete by July of twenty twenty-five for buildings as part of the agency-owned parcels. The perspective available to you is taken from State Street and Eleventh looking towards the river. We have the residential mobility hub tower to our left and then the residential building with the affordable housing components to our right. The proposed new YMCA facility is in our immediate foreground. Next slide, please.
Sorry, Brady, before you proceed with that, I just wanna see if any Commissioners have any questions of your own. That information is fresh. If that's all right. Anybody have any questions right now? Okay. Sorry, go ahead, Brady.
No problem. Moving on to our second proposal by Green Street Real Estate Ventures, we have the perspective taken from Eleventh Street and Jefferson, as if above the Boise Plaza Building. The mobility hub and parking facility is the lower of the two, running alongside Eleventh Streets and Jefferson, with the residential tower on the other agency-owned property at the corner of State and Tenth in the background. Next slide, please. In total, this proposal contemplates eighty-nine million dollars of private investment and anticipates two hundred and thirty-nine units. One hundred and seven of those units will be at or below one hundred and twenty percent of Boise's area median income. Fifty units will be at or below eighty percent of Boise's AMI, with the remaining eighty-two units market rate. This perspective is taken from State Street and Tenth. The mobility hub on Eleventh and Jefferson is in the background peeking out on the right. Next slide, please. This proposal contemplates two hundred and forty park boy stalls, one hundred and ninety-one additional parking stalls, and thirty bike boy bicycle parking stalls. This perspective is taken from Tenth and Jefferson. The project's anticipated materiality is brick and architectural metal facade. The project also includes ten thousand square feet of retail space as well as a green patio meant. Next slide, please. The project has multiple sustainability elements, including electric vehicle charging, an all-electric building with rooftop solar panels, low-flow water fixtures, and meeting the Enterprise Green Communities Building standard. Project anticipates requesting twenty point nine million dollars in agency financial participation. The breakdown shown before you. Construction is contemplated to start in January of twenty twenty-three and be completed September of twenty twenty-four. This perspective is taken from State and Eleventh Street. Next slide, please. And if there's any questions regarding Green Street Real Estate Ventures proposal, now would be a good time to field those. Great, moving on to PEG Development's proposal. This perspective is taken from Eleventh and Jefferson, as if from the Boise Plaza Building. Next slide, please. The project contemplates one hundred and twenty-five million dollars of private investment and three hundred and forty-five units total. One hundred and thirty of those units will be at or below one hundred and twenty percent of Boise's area median income. Twenty-five units will be at or below eighty percent of Boise's AMI, with the remaining one hundred and ninety units market rate. This perspective is taken from State and Eleventh Street. Next slide, please. The project's mobility hub and parking, public parking facility contemplate two hundred and ninety-nine park boy stalls, thirty bike boy bicycle parking stalls. The materiality used will be architectural metal facade, two living walls, a green patio. The project also includes thirteen thousand square feet of retail space. This perspective is taken from Tenth and Jefferson. Next slide, please. Project from PEG Development has multiple sustainability elements, including electric vehicle charging, an all-electric building, and low-flow water filter, water fixtures. The proposal contemplates fourteen point six million dollars in agency financial participation with the breakdown before you. Construction is anticipated to begin in March twenty twenty-three and be complete by October of twenty twenty-five. Before moving on, are there any questions or comments regarding the PEG Development's proposal? Wonderful. Next slide, please.
Sorry, Brady. I just had a quick question right there on that slide with respect to um, the street skates. I assume that the agency financial participation will be higher under this proposal when that's taken into account since the fourteen-six seems to just focus on the land of mobility.
Yes, great question. Thank you, Commissioner Hanyke. The proposal itself did not detail explicitly or requested agency financial participation for street skates. So we will use the the next period during proposal evaluation to further identify what its total agency financial participation, when including that street skate number, will be.
Great, thank you.
Brady, that looks like the end of the.
I've got a question, and Brady, you might have said this already, and if you did, I apologize. Here they've marked the land as five million, and I think the others mark the land as valued at, was it seven or seven-five? I'm wondering if it's because they're proposing to use less or they valued it differently?
Yes, great question, Mayor McLean. Agency parcels were appraised at seven and a half million dollars approximately. This project is currently contemplating only requesting a five million dollar land discount. We have not investigated the exact reason for the five million versus seven and a half million dollar difference, and that would be a great question to ask during the proposal interview period. However, at this point in time, I believe that the reason would be in order to make the uh, six-to-one private to public ratio investment threshold and making sure that that number is uh, meeting the RFP's requirement in that regard. But again, that is a great question to further investigate during proposal interviews.
Brady, this is Commissioner Jones. I'm just curious, there may be a slide upcoming, but is there a you taking all of these variables and put them against each other for us to be able to see sort of all three on one sheets uh, with these apples to apples? So I can just get a sense, cause my memory is not quite as good as maybe some other Commissioners.
Yes, thank you for the question, Commissioner Jones. And in two slides, we will have a side-by-side of the most most high-level details for each proposal.
Thank you.
Next slide, please. Now regarding the proposal evaluation and selection process. First, the board will appoint a review committee of three Commissioners. The review committee will analyze and discuss proposals and prepare for development team interviews. Review committee will conduct interviews with each respondent and gather supplemental data. The review committee will provide its findings and facts and comments to agency employees. The review committee will not make a recommendation. Agency employees will consider the review findings and prepare a ranking, a ranking of the three respondents. Agency employees will present the findings and ranking recommendations to the CC-CCDC Board in a public meeting. The CCDC Board will consider the input of the review committee and finalize the rankings in order to award an exclusive right to negotiate, also called an ERN. The agency will enter into an ERN and begin negotiating a development and disposition agreement with the top-ranked respondent. Are there any questions regarding this process outline? Okay, next slide, please. Here is that side-by-side comparison of the three different proposals. Of course, more information on each proposal will be provided to the review committee. And additional information will be available to be solicited during the proposal interview process. Next slide, please. Here is uh, the open question and answer session period. Doug Woodruff and Ryan Armbruster will also join me to answer questions as best as possible. Would anyone like to revisit any of the proposals in order to ask any questions or to follow up on any information that's presented?
Thank you, Brady. I just wanna remind everybody that um, this is a work session. Again, we are not making any decisions, and it's a great time to uh, voice any concerns, questions, anything you'd like to know. This is a good time to talk about it. So.
I I have one question.
Thank you.
Commissioner Jones.
Jump in.
Thank you, uh, Shannon. Um, I just wanna be clear, my understanding on the Edlin uh, group is uh, similar to maybe some other proposals where we've had RFPs. That proposal and the numbers that I'm seeing there is inclusive of land parcels that go, are in addition to the CCDC-owned parcels, and they've um, chosen to throw them all together. Is that correct?
Yeah, Sarah, uh, thank you for the question, Commissioner Jones. Wonderful, thank you, Sarah. So, uh, on this table, all this information that's shown only uh, relates to agency-owned parcels in order to have the side-by-side comparison. Eland and Company's proposal does include other parcels and other elements of a development program. Those details are visible on the slides, and we can provide additional information to the review committee on what encompasses that. However, for this information before you, we have just what's uh, being proposed as part of the agency parcels. You will see the note under Eland and Company for six hundred and twenty-six total units as part of the visionary outcome. However, we are uh, separating the two between agency parcels and additional visionary outcome uh, included parcels as best we can. So, uh, while the visionary outcome is naturally part of its greater proposal consideration, agency employees are uh, providing just what's on agency-owned parcels as part of this side-by-side.
So, um, Brady, I'm gonna say it, cause it was so clear, but I'll just say it, so I'm in the know. These all three proposals have to do with the exact same two parcels that are agency-owned that you called out earlier. Other than the visionary reference on Edlin.
Uh, I'll I'll jump in here. Uh, Doug Woodruff, uh, Commissioner Jones, the Eland and Company number that you see here of one hundred and eighty million dollars includes development on the ten-ten Jefferson parcel, as well as the half-block of land that the YMCA owns on Block sixty-nine.
Okay, so we are, in Edlin's case, there are some numbers up here that reflect beyond the two parcels that are agency-owned.
That's correct.
Does anything else, other than the numeric, the total investment, reflect something outside the two agency-owned parcels? I just wanted to know what I should be looking at, or what's what I what I am looking at? Other than the visionary, the visionary number and the one hundred and eighty, it just helps me know what is a true comparison of same same, if that may be helpful, and I'll stop my questioning there. I just wanted to be clear.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Uh, Brady or Doug, do you have a response to that, please?
The the Eland and Company proposal includes um, an initial phase-one proposal for a hundred and eighty million dollars and a total of four hundred and fifty units. That includes some agency land, and it also includes some YMCA land. The visionary outcome, the later phases of the development, um, contemplate developing a YMCA on some agency land and some YMCA land. So there isn't a clear delineation to say um, these three proposals have we can't necessarily, the way that the Eland proposal was um, structured and presented to us, isn't necessarily just on agency-owned land. So we can't um, provide that information to you today. However, we can get back to you with, you know, uh, with more information if you'd like.
And Doug, I just I just wanna add that we knew that this was a possibility when we put out the RFP. Um, we knew that it was a possibility that a developer or multiple developers would come back with an assemblage of land and include more than just our parcel in their proposal. And we had talked about how we would play that, and we're gonna have to discuss that further um, with the committee, and then when we, when we get to the recommendation from the staff or the rankings from the staff and bring it back to the full board. But this is, this is not unexpected.
Thank you, Chair. And and to add on to that, the RFP also included um, certain site control requirements that development teams had to um, uh, meet in order to propose on additional land. Um, so uh, proposals weren't allowed to propose on land they didn't have site control of. And so there isn't a situation here where um, these proposals require further land assemblage. What's been proposed, site control exists and can be built um, in a partnership with with this agency.
Thank you, Doug.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
No, I I just wanna be clear. I was just seeking to understand. I have no issue. I I know with other projects in the past, we've seen differences where bidders have uh, come with their creativity and/or their um, you know, additional vision and control of land. I just wanted to understand, cause um, it appeared that way, and that's what it's turned out to be. Thank you.
So Commissioner Jones, is it all clear now?
It's clear enough at this point for my satisfaction. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And it should be clear when um, the presentation comes before the full board after the uh, staff ranking.
Madam Chair.
Yes, please, Commissioner.
I have a question.
Yes.
Brady, you were um, very clear, I think, on your very first slide to articulate the kind of red box and dotted yellow box about what's what's really within agency control and just this conversation as well. It just made me wonder, with all of these proposals, those additional kind of whatever calls the parking lots that are outside of the yellow dots, um, are those within the control of each of these potential bidders, or we aren't gonna have issues with those um, those portions of that lot?
Yes, great que- uh, great clarification question, Commissioner Hanyke. Uh, short answer is is yes. The Eland and Company's proposal is the only one that includes additional land assemblage. And they own, uh, or excuse me, they have full site control of those parcels that they would like to include. Green Street Real Estate Ventures and PEG Development, both of their proposals are within that yellow dotted line that was shown on the second slide.
Thank you, that helps.
Any any further questions? Okay, and and just again, we will um, revisit this, obviously, um, when it is time to make a decision about. Okay, and, and just again, we will um, revisit this, obviously, um, when it is time to make a decision about which RFP we will go forward with. Um, if nobody has any more comments or questions or concerns, then we will close this work session.
Uh, Madam Chair, just one question for you.
Yes, Commissioner Stevens.
Um, Commissioner, Commissioner Stevens. I'm wondering at what point um, disclosures need to be made about any working relationships uh, myself in this case may have with any of the other um, applicants or people who made proposals um, of which I was totally unaware until I opened the proposals, so um, sort of a housekeeping question there about disclosures.
Thank you, um, it would be appropriate to do that when the um, staff brings the rankings back to the full commission.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for bringing that up. Okay, anything else? Okay, this is um, obviously very exciting, and we've all been waiting to see what proposals we got, and I will just say that I am um, very excited that we have three proposals that will all make a big difference in that part of town. Um, and we have a lot of work ahead of us trying to figure out which one is the best for the city and for um, the downtown.